We are going to be diving into a couple of labs. Now, a lot of these Security Plus labs are going to be Linux focused, which means they are going to be a little bit command-heavy. Now, I know that a lot of people can be a little Linux-phobic. Is a term that a lot of us tech instructors like to use. Because people, if you haven't used it before, it can be a little bit overwhelming. It's a new operating system, there are new commands. But our labs really offer a good opportunity to get hands-on. And you know, get that exposure to Linux that if you plan on going into a security role, you're going to eventually want to get familiar with it. And our labs offer you an excellent opportunity to do exactly that. Now, what I have right here is a lab that is open. I'm going to log into it. We're going to walk through a couple of steps here. And then we're going to talk a little bit about passwords. Because our main focus today is definitely going to be on passwords right here. Auditing passwords with a password-cracking utility. And I'm going to show you guys that password-cracking is easier than you might think. And you don't have to be a master hacker to actually pull this off. It's really just a matter of learning software. Once you learn a particular piece of software, just like you could learn Excel or PowerPoint or Word or you know Photoshop, what have you, you can learn how to use a password cracker. And you know, some of them are command-oriented, some of them are GUI-based. We'll take a look at a couple of different versions today. Now, before I dive into the lab, I do just want to mention what this is all about or where do we get these labs and this sort of thing. So, the labs are going to be found. Now, this is a class that I taught before the holiday here, Security Plus 601. And this is what, if you guys take an online class with us, I know some of you have. Most likely, this is what you're going to be seeing. You're going to come in here to log into your class. And if you scroll down the page, you guys are going to see there are a bunch of labs. And this one in particular, guys, there are thirty-four, thirty-four different, I'm sorry, thirty-two. I'm sorry, I misspoke. I swore there were, maybe they took two away. But yeah, thirty-two, still pretty good, okay? Still pretty good. Thirty-two different labs that you guys can do here, each one covering a different topic. Now, the cool thing about these labs as well, as you're going to see, there's going to be some instructions in here we can follow. And that's what I'm going to be doing. I'm just going to be kind of following the instructions, walking you guys through kind of how to use the lab while we demonstrate it. But you, this is a sandbox. These are all virtual machines. You guys can get in here and play around and really do whatever you want. If you want to go a little deeper on a subject, like if you run through the activity and you're like, you know what, I want to do some more. I, you know, you can do it. And I'll show that to you guys. You guys can do whatever you want. You could ignore the instructions if you want. You can do your own thing, you could self-teach. Basically, you can learn all the different programs if you want. But of course, the activities are there to give you a helping hand. So, the labs we're going to be looking at here, the first one I already have open is going to be lab number nine right here. So, that's the auditing passwords lab. And then, at the end, we won't spend as much time in this one, but we will be looking at scanning and identifying network nodes. Because that's, you know, relatively easy as well. If somebody gets access to your network, it's, you know, kind of surprising how easily they can find things with just a few simple commands. So, I do already have the first one open. So, you guys see the big blue launch button. That's how you'll get into the labs in the first place. And you'll see something like this. First thing you'll want to do is full-screen it, right? Get yourself a little bit more screen real estate to work with. And then, what we have here is the instructions on the right-hand side. So, as I mentioned, they will walk you through everything. And I'm going to leave this up here. I'm just going to kind of follow it along here. Because when you are entering commands, it is very particular. You do have to make sure, as you guys, I'm sure are aware, if you've entered commands on in Windows or in Linux or anywhere, you know, it has to be typed in exactly right. So, always good to make sure you're kind of following things along. I had this lab open previously, so it looks like I'm running out of time. That's never an issue, guys. If you ever do appear to be running out of time in a lab, as you can see here, you can always extend it. So, you have unlimited time in these labs. I should say, just so this isn't taken differently, you guys will have access. If you take the course, you'll have access to the labs for six months. Okay? And then, once you're in the lab, you can spend as much time in there as you want. So, yeah, so first thing that you're going to want to do, they kind of tell you what's going to be happening here in this particular activity. So, let me just kind of walk you through it. And then, we'll, then we'll go in and do it. So, the first thing that we're going to be doing is we're going to be creating some user accounts and some passwords. So, we're going to add these user accounts, add these passwords. We're then going to create a hash of these passwords using a command called unshadow. We're going to be combining password hashes with the usernames. And then, we're going to be cracking that list. So, this will be fun. The reason we're creating the usernames and stuff is so, this is a lab and it's especially useful for demonstration. Password cracking can take a while, especially if the passwords are really strong. But, so they give us some simple passwords. So, you can actually crack it during the course of the lab, right? We're not using a password-cracking machine here. You know, we don't have, you know, five or ten video cards stacked up in this particular lab. But it'll still give you a good idea about how quickly and easily this sort of thing can be done. So, that's what we're going to be doing in this particular lab. Adding users, making passwords, and then cracking them. So, so let's dive in. So, the first thing we have to do is log into Linux. Now, it should tell us here, we are using Kali Linux. Kali Linux is the, this is the one you're going to want to get, basically. This is what all of our labs are based on for security. This is the lab environment, the version of Linux or distro, distribution of Linux anyway, that has all of your hacking tools or all of your, let's say, penetration testing, ethical hacking tools, right? Because that's what you should be using it for. Ethical hacking only, guys, okay? So, first thing we have to do is login. So, they will tell you how to do that. I do want to point out, from the instructions over here on the side, guys, you can always pop over to resources if you ever needed a username or password for a machine. If you pop over to the resources tab here, it will tell you. So, you can see root and password. Now, I will mention that for some of the machines, the Windows machines, you can just click on these and it will type it in here for you. But, but it doesn't let you do that in Linux. You have to manually type it. So, I'm going to log in here. Our default is just root. And then, our password is this quote-unquote, "strong" password here. So, this is certainly anything but a strong password. And we're going to be talking more about that in just a bit. So, we're going to get logged in here. Just give it a second to kind of get loaded up. And here we go with Kali Linux. Now, as I mentioned, guys, Kali, if you're not familiar with Linux, you'll notice, you know, a lot of the Linux distros, they have a nice-looking GUI graphic user interface that you guys can do. And you can really navigate this pretty easily. It is pretty intuitive. But when you want to start doing things like searching for files, that's where you start to, you know, you have to dig into the commands for Linux. So, that's just kind of the nature of the beast. When you're working with Linux, it is very command-oriented. Now, before we dive into the commands and start getting through it, I just want to point out, guys, as I mentioned, you can do whatever you want in these labs. So, if you go up to the top left-hand corner, you can actually see all of your different software that's loaded on here. And there's a lot of it. And you'll see there's vulnerability scans, web application scans, database, password attacks. That's what we're going to be doing. We're going to be using John the Ripper. But there are other ones that you can use as well. I'll be mentioning another one called Cain and Abel. That's a GUI one, as just a side note. Wireless attacks, I mean, the list goes on. So, I do want to say, guys, okay? You can knock yourself out within the lab here. If you guys get out there and you say, hey, you know what? The labs are really cool, but I want to download and create my own Linux virtual machine. I want to go use a VirtualBox or a HyperB or something like that. Keep in mind, guys, if you're going to use any of these hacking tools, hacking is illegal, okay? Don't want you guys getting in trouble. So, like I said, within the lab, everything's fine. If you do want to practice or learn hacking on your own outside of the lab environment, guys, do a little bit of research. There are some things out there, like the WebGo server that is meant to be hacked. It's designed to be hacked. That's what it's there for, it's to practice. Make sure you're only ever hacking things that are legal, okay? Just want to say that. I just want to throw it out there. I don't want you guys saying, well, Matt told me, we can just go crack passwords whenever we want, right? So, always be very careful with that kind of stuff. So, as you can see, there are a lot of different applications in here. You guys can play around with them if you want. Now, as I mentioned, our particular one we're going to be looking at is going to be called John the Ripper. But we have to do a couple of other things first. And this is where we're going to dive into our command line. Now, the command line in Linux is called terminal. And you just have a little shortcut to that right up at the top up here. Terminal emulator right there. And this will pop up our command line. Now, the first thing we're going to have to do, so if you, if you kind of scroll through, you'll see your instructions here. Now, some of these labs are what are called assisted. You have assistant labs and you have applied labs when you get in here. The assisted labs will have you, you'll have to answer questions as you go through to kind of check your progress, kind of like little checkpoints that you kind of go past. So, that's why when I demo these labs, I have to kind of follow the instructions. It won't let me jump around. We have to kind of do things in order. So, you guys will have to do the same thing. On the applied labs, you can jump around a little bit more. If you wanted to skip a step or something like that, you can. With these ones, you do kind of have to go through it. Or at least put some kind of answer in there. All right, so the first thing we have to do here, that we're going to be creating these usernames. Now, we don't have to enter in a lot of stuff. We just have to make the user account and add the password. There are, these are some other things, other questions we ask. These are going to, these sorts of things would help us answer security questions. As a side note, before I kind of go any further, this is something that's social engineering essentially is what this is. Social engineering is, I like calling it hacking the human. That's a fun way to call it. Where you're convincing people to do things that they shouldn't or that are against their own or their company's best interest, like giving up their security questions or giving up their passwords. So, always be wary, just as a quick little side note on this stuff, guys. If you're seeing emails come in and, or, and be careful of stuff like talking on Facebook or different social media websites, that you'll see little ads, like little quizzes. You guys ever see those quizzes online where they say, hey, what kind of animal are you? And you go in and you answer some questions. Be wary of the questions they might be asking you guys. Some of those are scraping for security question answers. So, just be aware of that, that that's essentially what they're doing here. They're sending out a questionnaire to their staff and basically getting their staff to give them their security question answers. So, always be wary if people are asking for your first pet's name or your birthday or your high school mascot or your mother's maiden name or, you know, those sorts of things. Always be wary of that kind of stuff, guys. So, that's what's happening at the first step. Now, we have to go in and create the user accounts, okay? So, we've already logged in. We've already opened the terminal application. And now, we have to run the add user command, all right? So, that is going to be our first command here. Let's go ahead and get that started. So, we have add user and then dash dash. I always call it GECOS, but I hear GECOS or GECOS. I hear, I've heard it pronounced different ways, but I always call it GECOS. But yeah, that's, that's for our, wherever our user information is going to be stored. And then, we need to create user zero-one. Now, be careful when you guys are doing these labs on your own. They are, again, very particular. In order to, to get a successful completion on the lab, you do have to type things correctly. And they do point that out. So, for example, if you typed in user one instead of user oh-one, it wouldn't count, right? So, always make sure that you are, that you're following things exactly. Okay? So, we're going to go ahead and add user one. And you'll see, there you go, it adds user one. Now, it asks you for the password. So, the password for this one is a numbered one. Where is our password here? There it is. There's our password that we want to type for this one, just a numbered password. Now, one thing I do want to point out, if you guys are doing this independently, when you type in the password here, you can't see it. So, just know that as you're typing, it is typing, even though you can't actually see it, okay? So, I'm going to go ahead and type in the password. You guys will see when I hit enter, it will say password confirmed. And you guys will see what I'm doing here. So, there's our, see, new password, then it says retype. So, you couldn't see me type it, but I did type the password there. And then, I'm just going to type it again. So, oh-six, one-oh-one, nine-eight-eight. And we should be good, password updated successfully, okay? And that's going to be stored in this file called pass wd, which we're going to be using later on. And we're going to be cracking that, basically, okay? Now, the cool thing is to add new users. Linux does have a last command. So, if you are just in the terminal here and you hit the up arrow, if I can click on it there, you'll see it just pulls up your last command. So, there you go. I don't have to retype this. All I have to do is go in here and switch from user one to user two. So, I can just backspace the one, put in a two, hit enter. Now, I just created user two, nice and easy. And I am ready to go in and enter user two's password. All right, so I'm just going to go ahead and add these. And then, these are the passwords that we are ultimately going to be cracking, okay? So, there's the first one, I have to kind of retype. Whoops, let me make sure I'm typing that correctly. When you can't see, right? You got to be a little bit careful when, when you're typing. It'll tell you if the passwords don't match, though. Okay, so our next one is going to be user three. So, once again, you hit the up arrow, it pulls up your previous command, which in our case is the add user command. And we can just backspace the two and go to a three, nice and easy there. And then, the password is going to be duke. And then, duke again. And we'll just kind of continue this process, user four. And then, we have George. George, and then just a couple more here, guys. We will have user five. There we go. And then, this one, okay, so we got the dollar sign. That's when I always, the dollar sign, I was like, where is that one? There we go. And hopefully, I am typing this right, P zero capital T. Okay? All right, there we go. And then, one more, we have user six. So, again, we're just creating user accounts. That's all we're doing here. And then, we're going to confirm that they were indeed created. We're going to check that here in just a second. So, once again, user six in there. And we're going to do this, "good password", quote-unquote, got to the air quotes, guys, because these are not good passwords. And that's kind of the point. So, we're going to see that here in just a moment. Okay, oh, I got to do it one more time. Good password. Oh, I, so I thought, I thought so, guys. I see, I got the passwords don't match. As I, as I hit that last one, I felt my, my finger there type, I hit something else. So, I did mistype. Of course, it's the longest one. Sorry about that, guys. Yes, let's try again. Let's try again, okay? New password is going to be good, P A, W zero R D. Okay, and let's try that one more time. Okay, password updated successfully, awesome. So, there we go. So, we just created a bunch of user accounts. We created six different users. And now, we're going to go in and ultimately crack these passwords. Now, it says right here, confirm that the six specified users exist. They don't tell you how to do this. So, you don't really have to. You could actually, I do believe you can just click score and it will let you get past this part. But there's a couple of different ways you could view the user list. I would do, probably cat or less would be a couple of commands that you could do. So, I'll just do less. And then, it's going to be slash E T C, should I S P? Pass wd. And this should view our file here. And there are the user accounts that we just created. Okay? Don't worry about all this up here, okay? Don't worry, that looks like a mess, okay? Yeah, don't worry about that. We are just here to confirm our user accounts. And there they are, so user one through six, there we go. So, now, we know they're in there, we can get our score. That should be good to go. Yeah, they do run a script here that supposedly checks this, but I swear I did it. I swear I clicked score without actually doing it. And I think it confirmed it anyway. But yeah, there are a couple of commands. The reason they don't tell you which one to do here is because this is lab number nine at this point. And they presume you've gone through some of the other labs where they mentioned some of the commands like cat and less and some of these other commands here, okay? So, they're kind of testing your knowledge from a previous lab on that particular one. So, we got our user accounts, we're looking good. Now, we just have to go in and get some hashes and then work about, work on cracking them, okay? So, what do we have here? So, we confirm that. There we go. All right, so we do need to, we do need to run another command here. So, let me just, whoops, it's not letting me hit escape here. Sorry, let's do this. Why is it not letting me back out of this? Am I having an issue here? It's not letting me, not letting me back out. That's okay, I'll just make a new window. I don't want to, I don't want to delay that. We don't need that anymore. Okay, so now, what we need to do, we have a word list, okay? So, I'm going to pause here for a minute. Before we dive into the actual password cracking, I want to kind of explain the different mechanisms of passwords. Because there's a kind of a lot going on here. And now, the, the particular program we're going to be using is going to be called John the Ripper. But there are many different password crackers out there. And they all have their different commands. And they all have their different kind of mechanisms for how they work. Some are better for some things, some are better for others. Usually, they're all pretty universal. But I do want to take just a quick moment here to talk about the different types of password attacks. So, the two primary types of password attacks that we have are online and offline attacks. Extend my lab here. Maybe I shouldn't have started the lab before the class, running out of time. So, you have online, you have offline attacks. So, an online attack is what most people think of when you think of password cracking. Like, you've seen it in the movies, you know, where somebody is actively like at the login screen, trying to crack your password, right? So, like, you see that, like in the movies, they're sitting there, they plug in their computer and they're, you know what I mean, they're hacking it right there. I would say that's probably the less likely type of attack that's going to be used. Most of them are going to be what are called offline attacks. And that's actually what we're doing here is an offline attack. Now, what an offline attack is, is where the attacker has stolen a database of user passwords from a company, okay? And this happens more often than you might think, okay? Now, if you guys want to find out if you have passwords that have been compromised, a good website for this is called haveibeenpwned.com. Right here, haveibeenpwned. And you can enter in your email here. And it will tell you if your email has been compromised in a data breach. And, and how many times? Because for a lot of you guys, if you've had an email, and I can actually put this in the Zoom, I can put a link to this if anybody wants to check it out. It is a safe website. It is run by a, I forget the guy's name off the top of my head. But if you, if you look at it, it's run by a very well-known gentleman in the security industry. So, you can feel safe entering in your email here without any issue. I don't want to pull up one of my personal emails here to enter in on the stream here to demo. But, yeah, enter in your email and it'll probably tell you that you have been pwned. Now, what that means is, is that some website somewhere was compromised at some point. And your, and your account information, and it could be different things, your email, username, password, all of that stuff could potentially be in the hands of an attacker, okay? And you'll notice that you probably, you'll, you'll probably compromise more than you might think, especially if you have an old email. I have an old email, my, my original email that I have is I created when I was in high school. And that has nine different, it's been breached nine different times. There's been leaked out nine different times out of the internet, okay? So, the older your email is, the more likely your account has been put out there. This is why it's so important that you change your passwords regularly. Because it's possible through no fault of your own that your password was compromised in a data breach, okay? So, this is going to be very important. So, I want to mention that, guys, just to kind of emphasize like why it's important that we don't use the same password on this, on different sites. And we change our passwords somewhat regularly. I would say every six months is a good, a good window. That way, it's not so often that it's annoying. But it's, it's often enough that if it was breached, you should still have a new password by the time they crack yours, basically, okay? So, I just want to mention that real quick. So, and so, an offline attack, the attackers have stolen your database of passwords and then they are cracking it. Now, cracking the database is hopefully what they're going to have to do. When you store passwords, we want to store them encrypted, okay? And so, you guys have heard me use that word hash. And if you've been in a Security Plus class or even like a Network Plus, I know I usually mention it. You, you might be familiar with hashing. But I do want to give you guys a little bit of a rundown of what hashing is all about. Because it's a key component for secure password storage. So, I'm just going to pull up a SHA two fifty-six generator. I don't think I need anything fancy, just the generator should be fine. I've used this one before. Here we go. So, this is a SHA two fifty-six hash generator. SHA two fifty-six is a secure hash algorithm. This is a very strong, although there are stronger ones, but it's still considered a very strong type of encryption, okay? This is called hashing encryption. And this is how we are ultimately going to store our passwords. Let me zoom in a bit here. So, let's say I have a password, password one-two-three. Hopefully, this is not your password, okay? But I have password one-two-three right here. Now, this, when you just have something written out in readable, unencrypted text, this will either be known as plain text or clear text, okay? Those are a couple of terms that are on the exam. The difference is, now, you'll hear them used interchangeably, but just a real quick, because it's on the exam, the difference between the word plain text and clear text. Clear text is unencrypted text that is never going to be encrypted. Never has been, never will be. Plain text is unencrypted data that either will be encrypted or has been previously. Like, like if you were to decrypt a message and read it, you are reading plain text because it was encrypted previously, okay? So, those are the words. So, yeah, when you have unencrypted text, that's what it's called. So, I'm just going to use the word clear text. That's the one you hear probably more commonly, but it really depends. So, we certainly don't want to store our passwords like this, right? In, in the clear, as you might hear that term, right? In clear text. Because these are all going to be stored in a database, right? Somewhere. When you type in a password, you are sending your password to a website. That is being sent to a database somewhere where it's comparing it to a list to make sure you have a match, right? Well, if an attacker is able to hack that database, they can steal all the passwords. If your passwords are just in clear text, then they have everyone's passwords and can start compromising accounts immediately. This is really bad news, okay? So, that's why I pulled up this hash generator. So, what you would do, now, there's software for this, lots of different types of software out there. You don't, you don't have to do it online, okay? You don't have to do it manually. There's software that'll automatically do all this. But you are going to want to run it through a hash generator at least. And so, instead of storing my password like this, it stores it like this. This is called a hash or a message digest. Message digest, those are terms we want to know for the exam. That's the output of a hash algorithm, okay? And so, now, we have this random gibberish. So, this is really great. So, if somebody, like, let's say employees of the company were looking at the server, if it was in clear text, then even employees at the company could just see people's passwords, okay? Not to mention hackers who would hack in. So, if your passwords are stored like this, well, it's a bunch of random gibberish now. So, anybody who, any employee who might have access to it, an admin or something, they don't even know what your passwords are, okay? Now, so what you're ultimately doing and with this password cracking is we are cracking these hashes, all right? Now, the way that hashing works, hashing is a one-way form of encryption. It is called non-reversible or one-way encryption, okay? And whenever I mention terms like this, guys, I'm not going to say it every time. The terminology that I'm using, I'm choosing it specifically because these, this is terminology from the exam. So, things like non-reversible, one-way, message digest, okay? All these terms, there's a reason I'm saying it in this specific way. So, the way that hashing works, it's one-way, which means there's no built-in mechanism to reverse it. There's no way to go from this hash back to this password. There's no, just normally with other types of encryption, you can encrypt and you can decrypt, right? Forward and backward. This one is one-way only. So, how do you crack it then? Well, you crack it by guessing. Well, you crack it by guessing. So essentially, if an attacker stole your company's database, they're gonna have a list of hashed passwords. A list of gibberish nonsense like that, and what they're gonna do is they are going to guess a password using software. Hash it, they're gonna hash the password using the same algorithm that you used. Which is easy to find out, it's just bait, it's just the length, you can tell very easily what what kind of hash it is. I'll show you the couple of other types right here. They'll hash it using the same algorithm you did, and then they will compare it to the list they stole, right, so they are guessing, hashing and comparing. And when they find a match, ding ding ding, they just cracked a password. Okay, so so actually hashing your passwords doesn't. This is not an excuse for a weak password, guys, because if your password is password one, two, three, it's gonna be guessed immediately, that'll be one of the first guesses. And your password will be cracked. Okay, now, I want to mention one other thing, and then we'll get back into the lab here. You want to go beyond, you don't want to just hash, because as I said, if your employees have weak passwords. Then they're gonna be cracked still, okay, because they're gonna guess this, and then they're gonna compare it, and they're gonna find a match. And yeah, Ryan mentions rainbow tables, rainbow tables are when you do all of the guessing and the hashing ahead of time. So you actually have a list of passwords and hashes that you just have to compare to the list that you stole. Though this speeds you up quite a bit, and actually, so the reason I'm not gonna go down a rabbit hole of rainbow tables, so hopefully that explanation makes sense. Ryan knows what I'm talking about at least, and if you've been through a a security plus class, you guys know. But yeah, it's a pre generated table, well, the thing I'm about to show you here will actually serve two purposes. It will defeat rainbow tables and will make it much harder for attackers to guess your password, and that is called adding a salt. So assault is a random value like this, random gibberish nonsense that you add to the password before you hash it. This way you get a completely different hash, and the attacker, if they're gonna crack this password, they will have to guess this entire thing. Which they're just simply not gonna do. Right, there's no way they're gonna guess this random gibberish was added to your password, and that is called a salt. S A L T like that, like the table seasoning, or you know, food seasoning. Now, it's possible they could also steal your salts, okay, but that's a whole other can of worms there. So that's the idea, guys, what you're gonna want to do for password storage is you salt your passwords by adding this random gibberish, and again, there's software that will do all of this. And then you're gonna have a much more complex hash, it's gonna be much more difficult for attackers to crack it. All right, now, the other hash algorithms, as you can see here, if I was to do SHA five twelve, this one's even stronger. So you can see this one is a very long hash, this is gonna be much more difficult to crack, and then other ones are weaker, so like SHA one. Notice that it's much shorter. This is a problem, not gonna get into the whole concept of hash collisions, I could go on quite a tangent, and then M D five is shorter still. So the shorter it is, the worse it is, all right? So that's what hashing is, so I wanted to explain that to you guys, that's an important concept when you're talking cryptography. On the exam, and it's important to understand, because that's what we're working on here, that's what we're working on cracking is a list of hashed passwords. So essentially, what we're, what we've done is we've created these user accounts now, we've created their passwords. And then we're going to be hashing those passwords, and then we're going to be cracking those hashes. Okay, so hopefully this all kind of makes sense now. So the first thing we have to do here, getting back into our lab, now we're gonna start working on John the Ripper. Before we can use John the Ripper, which is our password cracking utility, we need to unzip our word list. So that's what this is here, we need to run a gun zip command here, which I'm gonna go ahead and type in, so this is our unzipping tool. You do gun zip, and then this is something where, again, you have to kind of get used to Linux. When you are working with files in the command line, it's the same thing in Windows, if you're working with files in the command line, you need to know the file path. So there's a lot of typing, I'm not an expert typist, if you guys are faster typists, you would, you'll love the command line, right? Because if you if you can fly on the typing, then you can do stuff very, very quickly, but it does take some practice, you do have to get comfortable with it. You have to know your directories and stuff. So, yeah, so what we're looking for here is a word list called Rock U. Now, there are plenty of word lists out online that you can go and download, you could literally Google dictionary attack word lists. And you will find, there's tons of them out there, John the Ripper has some built in, Cali's got some loaded in here for us already. So what we are doing is what we have here, we have our Rock U text file that we are going to unzip with gun zip. And so let me just, oh, see, this is why you check here, guys, so I typed in work lists, not word lists. So always good, so this is a learning experience here, guys, always good to double check, right, so here's what they have you type. And and I like that they updated the new lab, so you have to actually type it, it will take you more time, but it's good to get in the practice. Especially like I said with Linux, which is very command heavy. So that's what this gun zip command is doing, it's simply unzipping this file to get our word list, okay, so we're looking good, rock. This are the user share file in the word list folder, okay, so we should be good to go. Give that a second, and then it should just give us another command line that we can type in. Did it not, do I hit enter again, okay, there, there we go. It didn't register, oh, so that that, another thing to point out, guys, with the lab. Just you get used to it, once you get in the lab and start using it, you do have to bounce back and forth, so when you're clicking on the instruction pane over on the side here. Before you can type back in the virtual machine again, you do have to click on it. So you do want to make sure to click back over here on the left, and then you can continue typing, I make this mistake myself all the time, okay? Where I start typing and then I'm like, oh, shoot, I didn't click, and you have to go back over there and click, so make sure you click back over there. So gun zip should have just unzipped that file for us, and now we can go in and view it. So the vim command is a text editor, is what vim is, there's V I and then there's V I M. This is the the text editor, it's kind of like a notepad, but it operates in like a command prompt, essentially is what is, vim is kind of like. Notepad plus plus, I guess, kind of, if if you guys are Windows users, as most people are. So I'm gonna run vim here, and we're gonna tell it what file to open, so what we're doing here is we are opening up that word list file. That we're going to use in a dictionary attack, so after I open this up, I'm gonna pause again and talk a little bit about dictionary attacks versus brute force. Okay, so once again, we're just going to the user share folder, the word lists folder. And then we are opening the rock u dot T X T document, okay? So again, I always just like to confirm, make sure that you type everything correctly, extend my lap here. Because yeah, a typo, all guys, always double check when you're doing the labs, because if you have a typo, it won't work, and then you'll, you know, you'll wonder what happened. Or it could, you know, potentially change something, so yeah, always kind of confirm there. Alright, so go ahead and do that, and we should see, give it just a minute, and it will load the word list. Now, I'm not gonna scroll through this here, guys, everything here is, okay, good. I I thought I double checked this, I'm like, let me just make sure, so word list, guys, what this is, is a list of passwords. That's gonna be used in our dictionary attack that we're about to perform. That's a very long list. The reason I'm not gonna scroll through it is because a lot of people like to use vulgar language for their passwords, okay? So this word list is going to contain some bad language, so if you are sensitive, that kind of thing, guys, maybe don't scroll through and look at this list. And I think they say that, yeah, they say it here, language that may find offensive, you might, you might, so maybe don't scroll through this, but at the top, it's good. Nothing, nothing too bad here, but I'm not gonna scroll through it. So let me take a pause, before we go in and we add our user passwords to the list. Let me just talk a little bit about dictionary versus brute force type of password attacks. What we are performing here is called a dictionary attack, okay? So the two main types of attacks, I'll start with brute force, because that one's real simple, okay, and K, uh, John the Ripper can do a brute force as well. That's not what we're doing, but it does have that option. So a brute force, what it does is it guesses every possible combination of letters, numbers and symbols. It basically throws everything at the wall until something sticks, that's what it does. Tries to crack your password that way, brute force is very effective against shorter passwords, okay? So the shorter your password is, the more likely it is to be brute forced, I don't care how complex it is. You can have the most complex password in the world with random letters, numbers and symbols, write complete gibberish, but if it's too short. It'll be cracked instantly, okay? So what I usually recommend for people to beat a brute force nowadays, I say twelve characters minimum. For the for an average user, if I was in charge of a password policy for a company, I would set up likely a twelve character minimum for my standard users. And then for admins, I would probably look to do fifteen or sixteen characters for a little additional security there. So that's a brute force, so to beat a brute force, you pretty much just have to have a long password, okay? So brute forces are still very effective, but dictionary attacks are usually the preferred type of attack, which is why they are emphasizing it here, okay? Now, so what does a dictionary attack do? Well, the dictionary attack, as you can see here, loads a word list, and there are plenty of word lists out there online that you can download and use. Like I said, Cali has a few of them included, we're looking at one right now, like I said, this is a big list, I don't want to scroll it though, because I don't want to pull up. Vulgarities, you know, bad language up on the stream here. You guys can look at it if you want, if you get into one of these labs on your own. So it goes through this word list, now, there's something that password crackers do when they do a dictionary attack, and that's called permutations. Now, John the Ripper, I think it's kind of, it's appropriate, I guess, because it's called John the Ripper, you know, the the program, they call it word mangling. So word mangling are the different options that you have within John the Ripper for modifying the password guesses. Because it's not just gonna guess the things in the word list, it's going to modify those guesses in different ways. So it's gonna be making many guesses per entry in the word list, okay? Now, let me just show you for a quick minute, because this one we're looking at here is command prompt, we're looking at John the Ripper, and. You know, we're looking at a word list, but you can't really like view the permutations here, you just have to go and like, look, like I could Google it and like look up commands or whatever, but. Let me show you a GUI, real quick here, a GUI password cracker called Kane and Abel. Yeah, I already got a queued up, can enable perms, and let me just open up a little picture here, and I can show you guys what I'm talking about. So again, in in John the Ripper, they call this mangling, but permutations is a common word that is used or perms for short. And the word permutation basically just means like variation, it is technically means a change in order. Is right, I think that's roughly what the the dictionary definition is. So what you're seeing here is now, this is a GUI, which means graphic user interface, that's why I'm pulling this up as a picture, so it's a little bit easier for you guys to look at and digest here. Instead of like showing command options, but this is another password cracking utility. And you can see here, they are performing a dictionary attack, so up at the top, they have loaded in their word list, and then these are the. Permutations or the mangling, if you're in John the Ripper. Now, this one is a little basic, and a lot of other password crackers can go beyond this, so not only is it gonna guess everything in the list. So that's what as is, is, right, just guessing everything, then you have reverse, so it's gonna guess everything going forward and backward. It's gonna guess double words, it's gonna guess all uppercase, all lowercase, it's gonna do number substitutions. Let me tell you though, guys, other password crackers out there have the ability to do number and symbol substitutions, so a lot of people think. Hey, if I replace the letter A with an at symbol, an L with a one, and E with a three, it's gonna make my password stronger. Not really, or not as much as you might think, it's literally a checkbox, like this is how hard it is to crack passwords, guys, you load in a word list, you check some boxes and you hit start. That's it, right, just to give you an idea, or you could run a command like we're gonna do. Okay, so yeah, this is gonna be a number or symbol, now notice case perms, notice this one's unchecked. That means it's gonna guess every possible combination of uppercase and lowercase letters in each guess. This adds a ridiculous amount of guesses to every word. This will dramatically slow down the password cracker. So, believe it or not, surprisingly, one of the strongest things you could do for your password is to have a mix of uppercase and lowercase letters. Make sure you have at least a couple uppercase letters, that's what I always recommend, I want one at least two is better. Because that's gonna force them, if they're gonna crack your password, they will have to do case perms. So your password gets exponentially stronger simply by adding uppercase letters, because they probably won't do it. Okay, they're gonna crack other people's passwords, okay? It's kind of like the same thing, like, and so, so again, if hackers stole your company's database, and they're cracking your password hashes, it's kind of like the same thing, where like. There's this kind of like a joke, it's kind of, I guess, it's kind of a morbid joke, it's not really a joke, but it's like, how do you, how do you get away from a bear? How do you, when you're, how do you get away from a bear if you're with your friends, just outrun your friends? You know, that's kind of what it is with password cracking, if your password is way stronger than all of your coworkers. They're not gonna crack your password, they're gonna get all your coworkers' passwords first, and they're not even gonna worry about yours, right? So it's kind of like that, right, so as long as you are making a really strong password for yourself, you are protected. You know you will not be the cause of your company getting compromised, okay, and that's all you can do, all you can do is look out for yourself and your account here. And and of course, obviously, you can carry this to your personal life as well. And then you'll notice here, the last permutation is two numbers hybrid root, and this one, like I said, there's other more advanced options out there, this is just one of one example. In my experience, they will do up to four numbers at least, okay? Four numbers is really common, because a lot of people use number, like years, years, birth dates, stuff like that in their passwords. So they will guess four numbers at the beginning or at the end, because a lot of people's passwords are just a word and a number, okay, that's terrible, it'll be cracked instantly. All right, so that's what the permutations are doing, that's that's your mangling, or those are your options basically that you have when going through that word list. Now, we're not doing any of the crazy options here, we're keeping it real simple, because we don't have a password cracking machine, right, we're just doing it in a lab environment as a demonstration. But I do want to point out, guys, password cracking machines nowadays, they're, so in in the past, you need a lot of processing power, you need a lot of CPU power to crack passwords. And that's difficult to get, you know, supercomputers, you could build a custom machine with multiple CPUs and stuff, but nowadays, graphics cards. We got graphics cards, guys, if I was to search for a password. Cracking. You see, I mistyped it, Google's got me. What you're gonna see is computers with a bunch of video cards. Just a bunch of video cards, because these GPUs graphics processing units are super powerful nowadays. And so the more GPUs you have, the faster you can crack passwords. Now, these are used for other things as well, cryptocurrency mining, because that works with hashes as well, is used for deep learning and stuff like that, because again, a lot of processing power in here. All right, so let's continue on with our lab, so what we're doing here is, like I said, we are adding those passwords to the word list. So the reason we're doing this is because we want this to go fast, right, we don't want to wait around for these passwords to be cracked in a lab environment. So we're gonna go ahead and add these right at the top of the list, so they'll be guessed right away, okay? So in vim here, we are in the the vim text editor, we want to add something, so there's a button we have to click called our key, we have to click I. That turns us into insert mode, so now we can add things to our list, so we hit enter, and we go in and we add our passwords. All right, so we got our little password group right here, so let me just go ahead and start typing these in. Okay, so we got oh, six, one, oh, one, nine, eighty eight, okay? Then we have our password. Duke. George. And then spot here, this one, I always like, okay, zero, and then the T, okay? Whoopsie, that's why you gotta do it, so it's a, say, didn't a capital S there. And we want the dollar sign, there you go, always, always double check your stuff when you're typing it in here, so let me just kind of confirm these. Yeah, zero, six, one, oh, one, nine, eighty eight, password, Duke, George and Spot. Okay, so I think we're looking good, so I think that's all we have to do is then just save it, which. Yeah, we should have to do, yeah, hit escape and then hit the colon W Q here, all right? Be cute, this should save it. And take us back to command prompt, cool, there we go, so that's all we did, so we were at a text editor there, we're looking at vim, we added our passwords to the top, so they will be guessed first. And now we're back in our command line, and we can start looking at our unshadow and john commands, okay? So here we go, we can move on to run john to crack your passwords. So the first one here, it says run the following command to create a text file of usernames and password hashes, so this is what this is gonna do. We're essentially unshadow combines files, and so we're essentially taking the the past W D file and the shadow file. So it's gonna have the usernames and the pass and the hashes of the passwords, okay, and then we're gonna crack that. So that's what this first one is doing, is basically putting together the file that we're gonna crack, and then we're gonna run john, and we're gonna crack that file, okay? So let's take a look here, so we have unshadow, I have to kind of scroll this a little bit here, let me type it in. Unshadow. And then, all right, E T C, past W D. I know, I know, looking at command stuff here, guys, is not, not the most entertaining, that's why I'm trying to mix it up with us a little bit here, whoops. E T C slash shadow. Okay, those are our two files, we're looking good there, and then we want to crack. This. I think that's all we need there, yeah. So that should be good, as always, guys, let's double check, unshadow, check for typos and stuff. I've got, I don't know, I think I just got chubby fingers, so I'll mistype stuff sometimes, I'm not a, not a master typist. When I'm teaching nowadays, I do less typing, I do a lot more waving of the hands and mouse moving these days. But there you go, so crack this file, unshadow, we are looking good, this should go ahead and create it. Create a directory, there we go, so now we are good to run john, now john is a password cracker, like I just showed you with Kane and Abel, but it's all run out of command line. So that's something you'll notice with certain Linux utilities or software, a lot of them are just command oriented. So you kind of have to look into like their options and stuff, and and if you guys ever want a deeper dive on any of these. Like I said, there's tons of stuff you can find online, where they will walk you through all the different commands and stuff, if you want to do a deeper dive on your own, right? The lab walks you through the main kind of things, right, the the most important things that that you're gonna be seeing with it. But like I said, you guys can play around with these labs, you can do whatever you want, go nuts, right, nobody, nobody's stopping you, you can, you can mess around with whatever you like here. All right, so let's go ahead and run our john command, and let's see how that goes, let's finish this up here. All right, so we got john. And then we are running, so john has a few different modes, we are running the word list mode, okay, so that's why we're typing in word list as our command here, and. All right, word list equals. Okay, what's, what, hold on, what's going on here, guys, sorry, I think I'm like lagging or something, there we go, yeah, I think I was just lagging out for a minute. Oh, yeah, I actually just got a message, hopefully I'm coming through, okay, I just got a little message saying I, there's a little connectivity hiccup there.
Yeah, you're you're back online.
Okay, did it, did I disappear for a minute?
Just a second.
Okay, I was gonna, because as I'm typing, I'm like, huh, I think I'm lagging out, it's not taking my commands, and then I saw I was having an internet issue, I'm like, all right. I'm on, I'm on ethernet connection, I'm on a wired connection here, so hopefully it's stable. All right, so so what we're doing, again, we're doing the wordless version of the john command, if you guys want to look further into john, like I said, there's plenty of reference material out there on it. Okay, and then we want to get the file, right, so what we're doing was we're getting, we're doing a wordless command, so we have to go and get that rock you word list. That we just looked at, and we just added our passwords to, okay? So user share. Word lists slash, should just be rock you, but again, I always like to just make sure. Rock u dot T X T, and then we are cracking. Crack this file, and that should be it, let me just again, double check. Rocky dot T X T, crack this file, word lists, again, I I check myself, I do it because of typos, guys, I'm telling you. I always gotta make sure with my commands, and just make sure that we're looking good, so we are looking good here, guys, this should. Crack it, so there we go, and boom, just like that. Cracked all of our passwords, that's how long it took to crack those passwords. Now, again, we did, we did make it easier, you know, we did make it a little bit easier by putting those right at the top, and they're not particularly difficult passwords. But that's what it just did, so in the background, it cracked the hashes of the passwords that we just created. Now, the other commands that they have us do here, they say john show crack this file, so this is something you can do, I think they just make a new tab, yeah, they said make a new tab. Which you can do here, kind of cool thing with Linux, you can have multiple tabs, which is kind of neat of of the terminal, because again, Linux is very command oriented. So we'll go ahead and run john show. Go crack this file, this is the file we created here, which will show our information, so it should be good. And now it says zero, but we know that it has cracked them, so it just hasn't saved essentially the information yet, it has cracked the hashes, we can see it right here. This is what it did, it cracked them, so, yeah, so kind of ignore that, but all all this is doing is confirming that the file exists, that's all it is. That's all the step is for, so yeah, kind of ignore the fact that says zero, it did indeed crack them as we saw on the other page. That's all the step is for. So yeah, kind of ignore the fact that says zero. It did indeed crack them as we saw on the other page. So you do have to click score there. Just they want to make sure that you ran it. We're looking good. Now it says to type top, so it might not still be cracking. Actually, let's see if I type top, top is a command in Linux that shows you your, it's kind of like task manager. It shows you your processes that are running. Yeah, okay, so we can see that it is still running the process here. It is still using. I don't know why it says this percentage so high, like, but yeah, it's using all of our CPU basically. John is, because again, it's, it's a processor intensive process, cracking passwords. And you can see that's what it's doing right here. Okay? So yeah, I think that's all we have to do there. We'll quit that. We'll pop back over here. And then what do they have us do? Oh, yeah, then we have to put it into text file. So that's all we're going to be doing. We will quit this as well. There we go. And now, oh, it actually did crack the last one. So while we were waiting, there was another password there that took a little bit longer. That's the default admin password. That's the one I logged in with into the lab. It wound up cracking that one too. We gave it a little more time. It cracked that one. And we didn't even put that one at the top of the list. It's just an easy password. You know what I mean? So it wound up cracking that one as well. Cool, very cool stuff. I'm glad, I'm glad it did that before. Usually it takes a little while. That one went pretty quick. So cool. I'm glad you guys got to see that. Yeah, crack the, the actual admin password, which, you know, can be a little scary. All right, so now we're going to run a command. So this john command is going to take the results of crack this file and put them into a text file of our choosing. So that's what we're doing. We're showing crack this file and we're sending it to results dot T X T. So that's what we're doing. We're creating a file. Whoops. Make sure I click back over there. So show crack this file in a text document called results. Okay, that should be good. There we go. So that should have created that file. And then now we can confirm it. So they actually say to use the cat command here, either one, you could use cat, you could use less. I'll use cat because that's what they told me to do. So I'll just make sure. And then we just want to look at results. So we're just looking at results dot T X T, that file that we just created. And this will give us that information. So there it is. Six password hashes cracked, one left. But there we go. I do believe that is it. Yeah, it takes us into some questions, guys. So that is, again, what we did there. We created user accounts with easy passwords, so we could crack them. We then added those passwords to our word list, so we could load that into a dictionary attack. And then what we did is we ran a dictionary attack against our passwords and it wound up cracking them. It was as simple as that. This is why I pull up Kane and Abel, though. You know, this is why I kind of show or wherever it went, like the permutations. Because it's a GUI, you know, look at the command prompt. I know it's a little hard to kind of see what's happening there. You just kind of see the results. But I hope you guys kind of get an idea of what is happening. And John the Ripper does have a bunch of commands. If you guys ever want to explore a command in more detail. You know, in Linux, you can just pull up the help menu. So you can type in the name of the command followed by dash H. And they will tell you some different things that it can do. Right? So some of the different options, like different rules that you have. So like right here, here's, I mentioned word mangling. Here's your rules. Enable word mangling rules for word list, or actually, I'm not familiar with print mode. I'm actually, that went off the top of my head. That's not one of the three main modes, but I just reads words. Okay, that one I'm not as familiar with. But yeah, we did the wordless one. That's a very common one. There's single crack. There's some different things you can do there. But yeah, this is, you can see there's tons of different options, you know, you can add salts and stuff, you know, you can add all kinds of different stuff in here. You know, we're just keeping it kind of simple at this point. So that's really it on password cracking.